...May 22nd meeting of the House of Representatives, Commission Meeting to Order. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us in signing the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic that really stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Commissioners, before you, you have an agenda for tonight. Are there any additions, updates, or corrections? I have, seeing as nobody else does, under Old Business Section 13 from 2.5 Keeping of Animals, I'd like to add an item B, MSU Extension Input. Anything else?
Could I ask a question then? We also have information in our packet from the March 5th meeting, is from the March 5th Public Input meeting.
That's just for information.
So that's not a topic tonight?
No, no, it's just supporting documentation, but...
Okay, I just want to understand what the focus is.
Anybody else? Any other thing, Commissioners? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So...
Thanks, George. I'll support him. Mr. Westman supports. Thank you very much, Commissioners. We also have in front of us the minutes from last month's meeting. Oh, sorry. All in favor?
As far as discussion, you can point out the 26th of June is not our ready-to-go meeting date.
We're covering it down under next meeting. It's on the bottom of the agenda.
Well, I'm just bringing it, everybody's attention.
But we're going to go later. But you can do it now. For everybody's information, even though it's on the agenda and we'll cover it later, our June meeting is on the 26th because the previous Wednesday is 13th, which is a holiday, and offices will be closed. So, back on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I apologize, I'm pretty tired from working outside for two days. If you miss something, just yell at me. We also have our minutes from the April 17th meeting. Any additions, corrections, or updates to that, Commissioners? Julie?
In number one, should the second sentence be its own line item? Oh, that one for 9A1, sorry.
9?
Accessory structures. One is beta male hunting line, and then it's top of all beta men, should that be a so possible item?
I think the reason it was included was because it was all under hunting lines, but we could change it out.
Does it impact your understanding to have it just the way it is? Yeah?
I didn't think so, because it was all hunting lines.
Yeah.
And then we did reference that now the bus shelter should be number 17, they have changed to 18 to 17.
I'm sorry, I'm missing something, Julie.
But that wasn't in there at all.
What was it?
The fact that we changed the bus shelter number in the table from 18 to 17.
The draft has been updated. Since it's a table, it's okay even if that's not corrected. If it's anything that says correction to the content, then we'll be sure we address it.
But there's not a correction to the content, correct?
It's pre-numering and it's being fixed.
Anything else, Commissioners? Seeing nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the April 17th minutes?
Move to approve April 17th minutes, and Rick?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, minutes are approved. Thank you very much, Commissioners. In your packet, for those of you who attended the special meeting when the MDOT official came and spoke to us, there are minutes attached to that. Quite honestly, it was a very long meeting, and I don't know if these are correct or not, because there was a lot of discussion. However, since we were part of that meeting as the BAG Commission, we need to approve the minutes as submitted within our group, since we were officially part of that meeting. So...
Maybe the same change they made last night for Joe Wasniak, or Mike Wasniak?
Yep. In there, there's a reference to Joe Wasniak. His, can you speak up, Julie, when you speak, she can't hear you. It should be Mike Wasniak, not Joe Wasniak. Came up with the board meeting last night also. Anything else, Commissioners? Seeing none, may I, do you have something?
Nope.
May I see a motion or hear a motion to approve the minutes from the MDOT training session?
I move to approve the minutes as amended for the MDOT training session.
Support? Please support. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Opposed? Seeing none, the minutes of the special meeting, joint meeting are approved as amended. Now have an opportunity for public comment. If you have a comment relating to the topics on our agenda tonight, please step forward and say something, three minutes each.
Others in the public?
Hi, my name is Pat Floss of 5420 Carroll Road. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Westman, Mr. Neal, Mr. Goodman, former chair, and this is Andrea Zemansky, in drafting a revised version of 13.25, which you all will be discussing tonight. I was particularly frustrated when the packet was posted online this week to see the memo from the zoning administrator preceded, and with, I believe, a number of kind of misinterpretations and just poor presentation about the ordinance and arguments, in my mind, against the ordinance. And I just, I have copies of my comments, which if it's okay for me to share with you all, I can be, if you can, and you can pass them around with us, okay?
It should be given to the chair.
Okay.
And we will not be discussing it tonight, but thank you. This will be included in our packets for the next meeting.
So, just a couple highlights. So, in it, in the memo, she mentions the concern about BAG in agribusiness zoning districts, that there might be people who live in these districts who do not want someone to move in next to them, having animals, which I have sympathy for those folks, but if somebody that moves in next to them on four acres has a commercial farm, they could have their commercial farm, which again gives people the right to farm. And so, again, what our ordinance proposal suggests is that the township not see a difference between commercial and non-commercial. She also talks about right of farm interpretation, that we don't have the authority to interpret the act with regards to knowing the level of sales or extent of right of farm applicability on practical farming operations. I believe this is just clearly not true, since the township is actually, one of their arguments against Morningstar has been that they're not a commercial farm, right? And so, what, again, the ordinance asks that the township not look at income or profitability or any of that when enforcing its ordinances. And there's, there's a call for more public input, which is very frustrating, since this has been going on, as you all know, for three years, with considerable input from the zoning administrator, and to think that we're either not ready, or need more input, or that it'd be hard to enforce, I think it's just unbelievable. The only reference to GAMS within the ordinance is reciting and determining whether or not site is in category four, which is what municipalities have the ability to regulate. And my, my seven-year-old, who has a compass, can use a compass to figure out how many houses are within a radius. So this is not something that is challenging or difficult to figure out. So again, I'm clearly passionate about this and think it's important. I can't see the feedback from the town hall last month, or two months ago now, it was very clear that the citizens want something enacted, and waiting another year, or two or three, just doesn't make sense. And I would also just finally point out that the expectation that's being put on this ordinance is not being applied to other ordinances, such as accessory structures or home-based businesses. I would, I'd be curious to see how many citations are being given for those compared to people having animals, or how much public input is being gathered for those versus what's already gathered for this gathering ordinance. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for three minutes or so?
Good evening, Peter Stevens, 7500 Tribes Lane. I'd mostly just like to also share some of the sentiments that Pat did. I read over the draft ordinance that members and residents worked on. It appeared clear, understandable, and it made sense from just keeping of animals sense. Like him, I was a little disappointed to see immediate pushback on what the commission worked on. I was at the meeting for the RTF, and while the township doesn't have a right or any legal authority to determine what sales is, the trainer said that day that there has been a court decision, a judge has said, there's no difference in selling 1,000 eggs in one day or one egg in a year. They're both commercial. This ordinance seems to address that. It gives people the opportunity to farm. It gives people the opportunity to feed themselves. That kind of resilience is what I thought was part of a rural township. I'm really happy to see those ordinance being put forth, and I really hope it's passed expeditiously. Thank you.
Thanks.
King Charles Chamey, 4580 Farrow Road. I wanted to mention, one of the things that I really liked in the M-Ordinance Draft, that I just think is a kind of general thing in regard to ordinances and the like, is it looks at where are the complaints being put around animals, and let's make sure that the things being complained about are the things which are, which have more regulation focused on them, as opposed to regulating something prior to that to stop a possible claim. Specifically, this specific case, it's animals getting onto other people's property, or where the large, the complaint is largely originated, and so it has language about animals getting onto other people's properties being a nuisance, as opposed to the, and having animals in general. And so I was just saying that that's something that I think is really good, good for the way to have ordinance in, in general, so, thank you.
Hello. Lord of Fossage, 5092, decent ride. I am also here tonight to support and express my enthusiasm for the work that has been done on the keeping, the updated version of the Keeping of Animals ordinance. I appreciate the efforts of the working group and trying to drive to be reasonable and rounded and common sense. I am increasingly perplexed with the resistance and delay to updating this ordinance, especially since no one has really clearly articulated to me what significant risks an updated ordinance would pose. I am frustrated by efforts to discredit and diminish, diminish what does seem to be pretty consistent, if not overwhelming, community support for the updated ordinance. One main thing that I took away from the March 5th special meeting was the fact that the trust case said they had no idea how important this issue was to the community. Time and time again, they pointed out the fact that if we didn't communicate with them, didn't attend meetings, or tell them how we felt, how were they supposed to know what we want them to think? Well, I'm here telling you, and I hope that you listen. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is just on, with regard to the animal portion?
Anything on our agenda tonight, sir? Are you here for the accessory structure public hearing?
Yes.
We'll have a public hearing on that. Anybody else tell, other than the public hearing on accessory? Seeing none, move on to our reports. Planning, zoning administration, and enforcement reports, read.
So, it's been, how is this the right time to force? I think what we've seen last month has been pretty busy. We've had quite a few meetings, and we didn't properly get the accessory structure, and we had the review meeting with the stopwater management amendments, township engineer, and a lot of walk-in meetings last month. I think it's probably, might be because summer is approaching, everybody's ready to get started with their constructions. There was just a big hike in residents coming in to apply for ordinance, asking for questions, and a big part of those were law splits and private roads associated with it. That was one of the discussions at the board meeting last night. And we had a CBA meeting, a number of plaintiffs, we'll comment on that in a little bit. In the packet, also included this time is a little bit of a summary of the enforcement report. Just wanted to give you, you know, a breakdown of number of cases, and number of cases, we had received about 70 complaints, and we've been addressing about 70 complaints since May of 2023, and only five ended up with citations. And that too, it took a lot of communication, meetings with the applicants, reaching out with them. So I just wanted to bring the planning commission attention to that, that, you know, to see the proportion, you know, 6% of total complaints reached citations. Everything will resolve with communication. If you allow me, I would, let me know if this is a good time to respond to some of the comments, or when you get to the agenda, I don't want to respond to that.
When we get to the agenda.
Okay, I'll wait.
That's it?
I just had a comment. So I went back and looked at our master plan input, back in 2019, when we did ask for the survey results, and also at our visioning session. Two of the reoccurring comments when we asked open-ended questions were, we need to enforce our zoning ordinances, and we need to reduce light. And this was a big discussion at our opening, at our visioning session. So when we have had input, there was a request from, at least the residents who filled out that form, to enforce the ordinances.
Thank you, Kay. Anybody else have a question or comment for sure? Seeing none. Town support report, Mr. Westman.
Another marathon session last night. We started out with a presentation from Parks and Recreation today. They have a pretty ambitious proposal as to how the park, the people behind the wall and behind the firewall might be developed in the future. They have a proposed project to be developed in multiple phases, and if you're interested, there's a poster over there that will give you some idea of what they have proposed. The township board, they made any decisions, taken any action out of, other than we did accept and approve the master plan, but we haven't done anything about figuring out how to find those steps right there. Continuing discussion of the social media policy. We will probably have something finalized for our next meeting, so we'll see on that. We did approve an agreement with the Dexter Senior Center. We approved 50,000 dollars to support operations, and 30,000 dollars to support capital investment in their new building, so that would be a one-time expenditure, well, the 50,000 would be an ongoing expenditure, but we are providing support for that organization. We approved a permit for Sam Schork to conduct his motorcycle trials, which he's done every year for the past 20-plus years without any issues, so we anticipated any of this time around. The only question I had, I wanted to make sure that this was not occurring on the PBR protected portion of his property, because that would have to get out, and that was not the case. It's on the unprotected portion of his warrant priority. We issued a new permit for a private road extension for Hatt's Road. This is a, the permit was originally issued about a year ago, and the applicant did not know to take all the actions that he needed to complete, what he needed to do, especially regarding the maintenance agreement. And so, there's no provision in the ordinance for an extension, so what we did is, we just approved the new permit, and we put a one-year limitation on it, and we did reduce the performance guarantee from 50,000 dollars to 25,000. We also took a look at a private road application for value due, and the application was complete, but it did not have an adequate maintenance agreement, and so that, that is pending. We had a short discussion on how we wanted to proceed with these issues surrounding private roads and driveways with more than three houses on them. They're, of course, should be upgraded to private roads. Our ordinance says that you can only serve three, three residents inside of a driveway. So, it's really just going to do some research and try to figure out what kind of impact this really has on the township, how many, how many of these situations are sitting out there, taking time, how many are ready to, ready to come to the fore. So, we will probably be spending only this special meeting to deal specifically with that issue. We approved a clerk's request for some money to support the absent voter ballot application amendment, and that was a little over 1,000 dollars for that. We approved a food budget for the elected inspectors for both the August and November elections, 800 dollars per election. I think everybody knows that our clerk, our collegiate, is leaving us at the end of May, so we appointed her replacement. Her name is Tommy Vermaat. She is currently the deputy treasurer for Mr. Carr, but she has ample qualifications to serve as clerk, and we look forward to her performing in that due capacity for the township. We approved an agreement with the road commission for a cover on Z Road. And we also approved some money for a tax insert, or a PBR insert for our summer tax program. So you will see the PBR inserted along with your taxes. And that's what I owe for the township for.
Any questions, Mr. Westman, Commissioners? I have an amplification on one point you mentioned that might be valuable for the attendees if they weren't there last night, and that's the amount of money for the senior center versus percentage of our population over 60 that is eligible to use that, and I believe the number that Mr. Scharf said was 17%.
That's correct.
And that our contribution roughly reflects that proportion.
I think it was 16%.
16, 17, potato, taco?
No, I mean, our contribution versus all the buildings are very close.
Right. So just FYI, in case everybody goes, oh, they're spending money, it's right in line with our population, in line with us all. Thank you. Mr. Kleinschmidt, would you like to talk about the CBA at all? No?
Yeah, we have a meeting, we didn't have a variance request, but just maybe to revise our application and our bylaws. In the meeting, we elected, this is first meeting in years, so we elected officers. We have Gene Hopkins as chairperson. I'm on vice chair. Jim Arms is secretary. We have a new member on our board, Connie Savers. He was our alternate, and now, because Jennifer Simons is no longer on the board, so Connie's moved up to full time on the board. We also have a new alternate, that's Joe Peterson, I believe he's a lawyer. There were many things. We did a revise of application to the zoning board field determination, and we discussed revising zoning board field bylaws.
Any questions of Mr. Kleinschmidt on CBA activities? Commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much, Rick. Pete York, report.
I already mentioned the newsletter. In addition to that, the township board did approve forwarding ballot language to the county that would, would allow ballot language for a 10-year renewal of the PBR mileage. Would that be a renew and restore to the original rate? It would be renewed to the current rate, which is approximately 0.475 mil. This is because of the heavy reduction. Very often, these, these proposals are done on a renew and restore, which we have put it back to 0.5 mils, but the board does not want to do that, so, in that case, it will be on the August ballot, and it will be a proposal for a 10-year renewal. And Mr. Scharf estimates that that would generate approximately 280,000 dollars for the program in the first year. And I would remind everybody that historically, we've been able to leverage that approximately 5.1, so we would be talking, if we could continue doing that, we would have roughly 1.3 million dollars in a year, so, it's a pretty good target. So we'll see what happens, what happens.
So we'll see what happens, what happens.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on the PBR? Does somebody have a phone going? If you do, would you please silence it during our meetings? Thank you. Seeing no comments or questions on the PBR report, natural features, thank you.
We are getting close to finalizing the Natural Rivers District brochure and two letters, one of which would go with the brochure to landowners in the Huron River and Arms Creek District, and then the other which would go to businesses that might serve them. So we're getting satisfied with this, so we want to send it to this group for our next meeting to get your input, because this brochure includes information, which is sort of our BOLOX, but also it highlights the zoning ordinance, the Natural Rivers District in sixteen-three, so we would very much like your input. It is a master plan item assigned to the board, so we don't really need approval, so I think it could be a discussion item. But I would like to send the brochure and the two letters to be in our next packet. So I'm hoping we can get that on our agenda for comment.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything for, no? Thank you. Now come on our agenda to a public hearing for accessory structures and uses, which is section thirteen point one five in our ordinances. There's a zoning ordinance amendment. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. If anybody in our audience has any comments concerning accessory structures and uses, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at the draft that's in our packet, and that's what we'll be working on speaking to tonight. If you do have a comment, please step to the mic, give us your name and address, and if you haven't, please sign in so that we have that correct for the minutes.
My name is Douglas Goldhill, and I'm here with my wife as we respond to this portion of the meeting. We live at seven six nine six Base Lake Drive, which is the special district, I guess, under section nine point two-two. What I understand, I've read the packet of information that you have online, and what I understand is, well, the only thing I saw in there was a, that I directly understood was, and this is Selazny of Kavazny, asking about, it's April twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four email to adopt amendment for full path and guest quarters and detached garages. So I think that's what you're talking about. Can an ancillary structure, can there be some kind of amendment to allow sleeping quarters and habitation in the garage? That's why I'm here. My wife and I oppose that. We're here with the neighbor, Tina Reed, she was divorced from us, she's still in the D L L district. I understand that you oppose that also, Tina. Now, this is the reason. In zoning, the packet of information that you gave that's online says there's a principal building, that's for habitation. That's the house. Then also define auxiliary or accessory building, not for habitation. The zoning says garages are not for habitation, sleeping or habitation. That's what it says. So the request here, if I'm reading the email correctly, and that's part of what you're doing, is, hey, we want to be able to sleep and live in a garage on the property in that zoning district. And in effect, what they're asking you to do is to say there are two principal buildings, and that's not what the zoning is. So we're opposed to that. And part of it is, well, can't you get an affidavit from corporate office and say, hey, it's only for family use? Your affidavit's probably not worth the paper it's written on. Property sold, I'm the new owner, I don't have any responsibility for that. I don't see anything with regard to enforcement and penalty. And in terms of what I don't want to see is somebody living in a garage, it's a single-family residential area, and are asking you, well, we want more. And I say, what you have now, the zoning now permits me and other owners like me reasonable use of my property for my family. I made an addition because of my family group, and it's within that zoning, your zoning ordinance. I didn't need amendment later asking here. I don't see, so I've got reasonable use, and I say, other people like me have reasonable use of their property for habitation under the current zoning code. There's no compelling reason to change it. What is the compelling reason? Sometimes I come in to say, hey, you're depriving me of reasonable use of my property, and I'm saying, I don't see it here. So for those reasons, I think the current zoning is satisfactory. It affords me and other people like me plausible use, reasonable use of my property for habitation. And as far as future use, I don't see anything that's proposed that's going to bind somebody in the future. And as far as me coming in and playing devil's advocate and saying, well, I want to help have habitation in my garage, and gentlemen, I'll sign an affidavit, right? And let's say things change, and I don't follow the affidavit. Now, there's enforcement, Sri can come out there and say, well, your neighbors are complaining. And I say, prove it. My word against yours. You've been there before. Can't do it. And even if you could prove it, what's the penalty? There's no enforcement, no penalty. And I'll leave you, there's no compelling reason to change. Thank you. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for three minutes or so?
Hi. My name's Jay Marv, seven five hundred Base Lake Drive. Moved up there, lived there my entire life. I, unlike Dennis, I just support it, because when my kids come, it would be nice. I have a very small house, not a big house. It would be nice if my kids had a place to stay while they came to visit. They come often, I have a son, Ali, he comes for a long weekend, what, two or three times a year, if I'm lucky. I have another son that lives in Dexter that pops back and forth all the time. We have, I have seven grandkids. My house is just over a thousand square foot. So it would be nice to have an accessory dwelling where they can live when they come to visit, and then I won't have to spend ungodly amount of money making my house bigger just so that they could come, and I can have rooms for them, you know, six, eight times a year. I don't see the need for that when I already have a garage that I can convert into a place where they can stay. So I'm in support of it, just on the fact. I know there's other people here that think, okay, well, people are going Airbnb's. Maybe you could put something in with no short-term rentals. That would solve it. You know, just further your family, because that's what I want to use it for. But it's, you know, I've seen the change at the lake over the past sixty years, and, you know, it's gone from these small cottages to big homes. Yes, there's a lot of space in these big homes, but I don't have, so, and I don't really want to take and put a big home on my lot and take up all the lot just so I have room for the kids. Thank you.
Here you go, six seven seven two Mastro. I just was listening to the two people that spoke. I kind of agree with them. How would the township even know if they let their kids sleep in the garage? And second, how would you even enforce it if you didn't know about it? I mean, I don't even understand why you guys are discussing this. But I would like to comment, and I'm looking at all the notes from Sri and the comment that she made to me. So accessory structures, if they're two hundred square feet or less, you don't need a zoning permit. This was changed years ago. You don't need a Washington County building permit. But now it can't be, it's got to be inside the setback? That's crazy. Has there been a bunch of complaints about that, or is it just something we decided we need to change? I mean, we're all in a country, and somebody can't have an eight-by-ten shed sit ten feet off their coffee line? I mean, my neighbor's got pine trees. They're growing on my property. I get pine cones falling, now I get to yell at pounds. Should we make an ordinance that you can't have pine trees inside the setback? I mean, and the other thing is, you don't need a permit for an air conditioner, it can be in the setback, but you need one for a generator. Now, I don't understand that. What's the difference? I get this example last night from the township board. My house sits thirty-two feet off the top line, and my parents built my house, it wasn't even any zoning. So I have an air conditioner sits there, technically it's in the setback, so if I want to put a generator, now I got to come to the township and get a variance? I mean, come on, that makes no sense. Who's it hurting? And you can't have patios or anything in the setback, according to these notes that I'm reading online, because I'm trying to find the best information I can, there's nothing at the table, and very limited on myself as far as I'm concerned. So I just discussed with Bill. So I can create patios, and he's taxed me on it. So I said, Bill, if I can create my driveway, you don't tax people on concrete driveways. So technically, it'd be the same width as my patio, so you couldn't call it patio. And I can do that in the setback, but I can't have a patio on the setback. I mean, it's just crazy. I could can create my driveway, put my patio furniture out there on it and call it a driveway, and it can be in a setback, and supposedly I don't get taxed on it. Now, I don't know who comes up, dreams up this stuff. I don't, it just makes no sense to me. Why don't we just do the stuff that we need to do? Like, we're supposedly a rural township, but we can't have chickens. I don't get it. It just, I don't know who thinks this stuff up, or why you think it's important. I can't get any answers on anybody. Are there complaints that come to the township? Or is there our enforcement guy going around and saying, oh, he's got a shed in the setback? We need to change that. I mean, I could count, I can look out my window and count five of them, including mine, that sit in the setback, and I don't think they're a problem. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's not what you guys are discussing, but, and I don't understand the whole thing with an attached accessory structure to a house. That blows my mind. Isn't that just considered an addition? I mean, that's how I would word it, but evidently it's not. So I don't know, if somebody has a garage, it's considered now, if they want to use it as living space, it's considered attached accessory structure? You can't do that? We need to think some of this stuff through. We need to quit thinking that we're going to solve all these problems that aren't problems because nobody's out there creating them and nobody's complaining. So I think, you know, we should work on the stuff that we need to do, like keeping up animals, and chickens especially. I mean, I can remember when somebody called from a large apartment.
This was not, this is not keeping up animals, we're talking about accessory structures.
Okay. I, I, sorry. I'm talking about. But I just wanted to comment, like, maybe the planning commissions' time could be better spent on things that might be a problem or are a problem, instead of, oh, wishful thinking, let's just create this ordinance because somebody said we should, or we went to a seminar or something. I just think that this township has created a lot of rules and regulations, and it's just hurtful for the township. I mean, and there's no way to enforce half of it anyhow. I mean, if Jay Marsh has his two sons out and they're living in the garage, how is anybody going to know? I mean, you can pass all the ordinances you want, even if a neighbor complains, what's the township going to do? Hey, let me go in your house and see if your sons are sleeping there on the weekend? It's like, it's unenforceable. So don't even add it. Thank you.
Thank you, and please keep your comments to three or so minutes. Thank you. It's in the agenda today, we'd like to try to stick. Thank you very much.
Yes, my name is Neil Payalala, I live at seven six two four Base Lake Road. Jay Marsh is a neighbor, Dennis is a neighbor, a lot of my other neighbors here. We live on an area where the homes are quite close to each other. I'm not sure I really know how I stand on this, but I do have lots of questions and concerns. One is, why are we doing this? What's the purpose of it? We have established rules now that seem to work pretty fine, and I don't know why we're doing that. It would seem to be founded in a good foundation of logic. Second comment I have is, how do we enforce this? Like the gentleman before me said, if Jay's two sons live in his garage, I mean, who cares? I have neighbors now that live three houses down from me that have, he bought a garage, do it all the time, and do it now. And there's, I don't know what enforcement mechanism you have to enforce it. And if you don't have an enforcement mechanism, my big concern is that our little street, because we live on water, becomes a mecca for people doing like an Airbnb or PBRO, where they're giving weekend rentals to people to stay in their garage, and I think that would really be detrimental to the township. So those are my concerns, and thank you for giving me the time to discuss.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to comment during the public hearing, section of accessory
Good evening. Matt Gills, five nine five two, The A A Road, working through it. Is there any option on your RN or your N to maybe be less strict on agricultural properties? I think you've got big families sometimes in these farms, and it's either the problem of allowing a second house or a third, or I guess a second house, so the second. And a lot of law speak, some things will allow them to expand on these bigger properties. Also, I have one concern would be the wording in this regarding that the zoning administrator may allow with the affidavit. I think that should be more clear. I worry that sometimes personal opinion can be used to make judgments as opposed to clear facts. So if we can kind of clarify the zoning administrator's responsibility, how they approach these situations as opposed to saying may, that would kind of maybe alleviate some of those concern that, you know, sometimes a bad day and doesn't allow something for someone when that shouldn't be such a case. That might be rectified through lots of headaches, so we can kind of limit that gray area will be maxed as well. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments concerning accessory structures? Seeing none.
I just wanted to get on the record that there were three emails that were provided, one in the packet, two on the One in the packet, two on the desk. Those are, should be included as public record. Uh, one is, um, one is from, uh, Quasny. She's a resident. Uh, she is, she sent an email in support of the amendment. Uh, and then there's an email from Dennis, who was here earlier. And then there's an email from Tina, um, who's also here. Uh, Tina and Dennis are not in support of the amendment. Quasny was in support.
Thank you. We will have, did you do copies of these? Does anybody else have any public comments concerning accessory structures? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing on accessory structures. Thank you very much for your comments and input. I put my agenda aside. I'll, I'll find it. Oh, there it is. Public hearing is closed, as I mentioned. Uh, we'll now move on to old business, which is Keeping, uh, Keeping of Animals Working Group draft. I had asked the commissioners at the last meeting to not prepare to give comments.
Don't we need to talk about the accessory structure ordinance?
We're having a public hearing. Well, that's right, isn't it? Yep, nevermind. That's okay. No, I was going to put on a next week's week, collect their input and consider it a little better, as opposed to knee-jerk reactions, but...
Oh, so you don't want it?
I think it's better if we would...
I think we probably skipped a step ahead. We need to... Do the discussion on the accessory structure.
That's the question, and we didn't talk about it.
Before we talk about keeping of animals, that agenda I wrote is after, now that the public hearing is closed.
I would like to give the commission time, commissioners' time to digest this. But if Sri or you guys would like to do it now, we can certainly do it. I think if, um, if we can work with this, we're reacting to people's comments and knee-jerk reactions, in my view, but that's okay.
I'm confused, because don't we usually have the public hearing and then talk about it?
Accessory structure.
Accessory structures? So, I'm, I'm just confused that we seem to be doing the legal...
Somebody told me I was in charge of the PC, but apparently I'm not. We will have discussion, because you won't. Commissioners, any discussion?
I didn't say I wanted it. I was just wondering.
Commissioners, any, we will now open for discussion among the commissioners. Sri, would you like to give us background on the memorandum that you supplied?
For accessory structure.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, okay, I think I, I'm, I, before I talk about the memo, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the residents who showed up today. It really, I, I really get excited that people are involved. I know there's always a range of opinions, agreements, and disagreements, but I am excited that they are reading it, they are sharing their opinion, not just because they heard from somebody, they've read the packet and shared their opinion. And I've, I've also spoken with Tina, Mr. Gallagher. They called, reached out for, uh, you know, clarifications. And it helps clear certain questions before they come to the public hearing and then share some misunderstandings. I've reached out to Mr. Gary Cook as well, because he was at the board meeting last night with, with, um, with the same comments, and I wanted to have an opinion to clarify. Uh, couple of clarifications. One of the resident, Mr. Dennis believes, referred to the term as accessory dwelling. I want to clarify, this is not an accessory dwelling. All we're doing is allowing sleeping for family members or guests, subject to them providing a use, a non-use affidavit, which will be required to be recorded with register of deeds, so that it stays as a restriction or a covenant with the land. So when the property ownership changes, that restriction is passed on to the new owner. Um, and then there was another comment regarding, um, why are we doing this? Ms. Quasny's email in the packet is not the reason why this started. She has just expressed her opinion in support, just like other members from Base Lake have showed up. What started it is because, not the complaint, we've been talking about this amendment for over, we've had three or four meeting discussions, and the first, it's mostly because the current ordinance has standards kind of staggered all over the zoning ordinance. If somebody opens it, they have to shift between various sections to be able to understand what's allowed and what's not allowed. So as a zoning administrator, I'm constantly trying to explain to people that it's in this page and then also here, but what this is, is kind of, my, you're not to do it because of this. So the attempt here is not creating new standards. The attempt here is to make all those standards in one place, so that they're not lost in translation. And then the attempt here is to make it easier for folks. For example, the current ordinance does not allow any structures within setbacks. So for ad districts, which is a majority of districts in Webster Township, you cannot have any accessory structures within thirty feet from side setback, even if it's less than two hundred square feet. What we're doing with this amendment is we're allowing a break. If it's less than two hundred square feet, it can come within thirty feet. So we're not making it restrictive, we're making it a little bit, um, more flexible. And that is in response with a couple of residents who showed up at previous meetings and asked the planning commission to consider this. So, I want to clarify that. Um, and then there was another, um, question regarding, we talked, we talked about whether the affidavit is legally binding. It is, it will be legally binding, because the way it was drafted and the language put in the ordinance, it was, um, spoken with our, uh, and we did refer to our attorney for advice, and then he did say that if it's recorded with the deeds, it is legally binding. It's a restriction that stays with the land. And then I had this, uh, I would leave it up to the planning commission, how they all want to address the sleeping part of it, but I just wanted to clarify for residents here, those points. And with regards to being a fair assessment, when the statement says the zoning administration may allow, the zoning administrator is not intended to make a decision whether it should be allowed or not. The zoning administrator is just to make sure that, is the affidavit, was an affidavit submitted? Does it meet the standards? If it does, then he may allow sleeping. Uh, it's not at the zoning administrator's discretion whether, regarding the use, it's just his, uh, duty to make sure proper procedures are followed. I think with that, I don't have any, uh, summary of the memo, but I just was, I am excited and kind of a little, um, surprised with some of the misunderstandings over here, but I also wanted to offer up that there is a page on our website dedicated to text amendments under consideration. If you go to master plan, zoning ordinances, there's a page that takes you there. It has updates on it. If an amendment is on planning commission's agenda or board's agenda, a draft will be included on that page. Uh, and then my contact information is there. You can always reach me via email. Tina and I spoke for, what, twenty-five minutes? Uh, she was, she called to get, to make sure she understands what it is. So please, I'm happy to talk to any number of people, any number of times, so that there's no misunderstanding. Uh, please do call me. We may not always agree, uh, but the planning commission has been very, very, um, like, this is one of the best planning commission I've been working with, very diligent, very detailed when considering any amendment to make sure that it's, you know, we're covering all the bases. So I wanted to give a shout out of that, based on my fourteen years of experience in planning. This commission is very diligent, very, uh, in tune with the needs and the master plan. So, with that, if you have any questions in the draft, there are no major changes since last time. It's just what we were discussing, what we were in the minutes. But if there's anything you want me to expand on, I'm, um, happy to do it. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you see anything from the last draft that we changed or that we need to discuss?
I got some, I got some questions. It's been discussed before, but that's the difference between a roof porch and a roof breezeway.
Okay. Uh, we've had this. I think it's a good question. Thank you for raising it. I think it also helps them. Uh, if we take away the word roof for a minute, we have to refer to the definitions of a breezeway versus porch. Uh, porch is something that's at the entrance of a house, and breezeway is something that's connecting two structures. So, that's the major difference. And...
It's still connected.
Right, but, but a breezeway is connecting two structures. We are, we are using the breezeway to determine whether the other structure is considered attached or detached. We're not saying breezeway is different from porch. We're not, we're just using that as a method to determine whether the other structure is attached or detached. The reason being, if a structure is determined to be attached, then it can have a height, same height as the principal building. And if it's detached, if a structure is considered attached or detached, then it should, it can only be up to twenty-five feet high. So, again, porch and breezeway are similar, but we are using breezeway just to determine whether the other structure is attached or detached.
But we've had zoning board appeals hearings in the past, and, and if it comes to the, the ZPA, it's, I mean, you have, you can't determine what you think you wanted to say, it's what the definitions of everything is. And so I, I think that, you know, we've had cases in the past of whether it's detached or attached, and, and the lawyer said that if it's connected, it's attached, and you're connected.
The breezeway is attached.
Okay. If it's connected, attached means connected. And if it's connected, the lawyer told us that the other one, here is connected.
I believe, I, I have to look into that to figure out why the lawyer might have said that it might have been the definition at that point, the standards that were existing and the case in hand. But we are revising the language to address that difference. We are revising the definitions to clarify that. And this draft has been shared with our attorney to get some comments, so...
Okay, I got another one. In, uh, E two, A, um, yeah. Yeah, I built several houses that have bonus rooms above the garage.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind. I think, uh, maybe a, probably a simpler way to dra, address that is just take away the word roof porches, because the definition of the porch calls it having a roof, so there's no point in being a rooftop.
But, getting back to, I built several houses that have bonus rooms above the garage, and it says a, uh, it says, uh, a patch, accessory building like the garage, you can't have living quarters. Well, you know, maybe this should be changed as a state, and that it, you know, you can use that bonus room above the garage as a living space, as long as the access to the living spaces through the upstairs of the main house and not, and not an outside stairway. I mean, if this reads, you can't have living quarters above the garage.
Yes. Unless there should be affidavit.
Okay.
Unless they submit an affidavit. Oh, and then if they have access directly from the main house to the space above garage, then that is considered an extension of the house, not a detached or attached use.
Another issue, as Gary brought it up earlier, and we've had this in the ZPA, some of our appeals, um, issue years ago, and you can talk about patios. Patios is not a structure. And it's no different than, like Gary says, it's no different than a, than a driveway or a sidewalk. So why is that considered a structure? Again, you say it can't be in the setback.
Hello, many more.
On the rule on Mastro years ago, also.
Uh, I, I wanted to bring your attention to, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanted to clarify that as well. Uh, the internet here is so tricky. That requirement that the patios need to stay away from the setback is not a new one. It's in the zoning ordinance. Like I said, things are in multiple different places, so it was really hard, um, for me. That, that's the reason why I was, I requested the planning commission to compile all standards in one place. Uh, but I wanted to indicate where that is.
But does, does that mean that you have a brick sidewalk, you can't have it in the setback?
It, it only, uh, refers to, uh, patios. It does, it does not say anything with regards to sidewalks or paved areas that are used for circulation. Patio is considered a use of, like, a space that is used by residents. Sidewalks, driveways are considered circulation areas. They don't stay there, you know, they don't use that beyond, for navigating from point A to point B. Uh, so it is, if we go under definitions of patio, in our existing ordinance, that is not a new standard. Again, uh, I wouldn't bet my life on it, but, uh, seventy percent or eighty percent of the standards in the current draft are just carried over from existing standards and clarified, put them in one place. And the other part are included to make it clear for residents, uh, how to, what, how to apply, understand the permit requirement. And the other are, is just to make it easier for them with regards to, you know, the leave the left of it and such. So patio...
Under definition, it always says, "If untrodden courtyard or platform extending horizontally out from the main building or structure located on grade."
Right, uh, but I, I think there's another one. Let's find it. Uh, I can get back to it, uh, while we talk more, because I just need to do a little bit of digging and that exactly demonstrate what we challenges with the existing ordinance. Speaking of actually, of breezeways and allowing living space above breezeway and, and that, I think I have a perfect couple sitting right there, which, who are the reason why? I was trying to get that in the ordinance, so that I don't have to go through that exercise again with another resident, and it's clear. So thank you for showing up today. Look what you started. No, they didn't. But, check, you can, I'll, I'll find it, what volume one. But I'll get back to that.
Are you taking, taking notes? He's got another one.
Yes.
Page twenty-one, eighty-one. And, uh, Sri, actually, it says fences in all districts. It says a permit is required, and it, it has to, uh, by the setbacks. Uh, on page thirty-two of eighty-one, it says all fences can be in, in, in any, in any district. So why, why is it, this state, you can't be in a setback?
I believe, let me confirm that. I believe you, it can be on the property line on site and rear, but in some times, there is a setback in front. I might be wrong, but that is a great catch.
Could you say exactly where on twenty-one it is? Where is it on twenty-one?
Number three.
Number three.
Number three, thank you.
Number three.
You're correct. I think that it should be no. The fences, compliance with setbacks is not required. Is it basically that has standards for fences in front? But I, I'll, I'll look into that in a second fight before we move on, but I believe...
The ordinance states for setbacks for fences may be located in any required yard and are not subject to setback requirements. And the baseline lake residential district fences are not allowed in any yard, blocks, border, and base lake drive or leach lake.
Well, then we should just change that to yes and no. Thank you.
So we're talking about number three?
Yes.
Permit required, yes. Set, allow setbacks, no.
I'm ready for the next one.
Since we're on the table, I just have a couple grammatic. Number 10, you have guest kind of C with a lower s. And then when you go to 16, you have no period, C with an uppercase.
But it's the typeface. We talked about this in SBA. It really is a capital I would...
No, no, the, the, the one C, one is uppercase and one is lowercase. And one is a period and one is a capital. So just as long as they're consistent. I don't know which way is the right way. Is there a knock about three?
Oh, yes.
Is that the one thing?
Page six to seven, letter 13.80, number H2. The very last sentence, you have an apostrophe that don't have a match. Red to be for complete living facilities.
Can you say again where it is?
Yeah.
H2.
H2. Oh, yeah. At the end, need another quote.
Yeah, I don't know if facilities need for that.
There's a quote.
At the beginning of complete living facility, but not one at the end.
Right. The very last phrase in the sentence.
But I don't know if they even should either.
Oh, oh, so if you go to the definition. So the term complete living facilities is referred in the definition of dwelling unit. So we're saying that if you're trying to figure out what a complete living facilities is, you refer to the definition for the term complete living facilities.
Yeah, so it should have apostrophe at the end of it.
Yes.
We've got the first one and that's a...
Yes.
Is that an apostrophe?
Stick a quote.
Limped to cable, just to explain.
Just before the ending period, you want to... It's sort of a single quote.
Quote, yeah.
She wants the last one right here.
You've got it, you've got it up here. And then my last one, still in the definitions. Desperate consistency under dwelling, we have full hyphen kitchen and full hyphen bath. But then in the definitions, we don't use the hyphens. And shouldn't it be bathroom in under dwelling? I should sit.
Oh, she meant here, the titles. Because we have a hyphen there and we want a hyphen there.
Happy bathroom?
Yeah. So you're saying that where the term, I think what Julie's saying, where the term full bath is used to make, to revise it could be consistent with the definition title.
Yeah.
So remove the word facilities and the hyphens?
No, I, I think we move on to the other. It's just that making sure we're using the same term as reference anywhere in the draft.
So remove the hyphens also.
I guess either way, if you put a hyphen here, we put a hyphen on the other side.
So I called Tree and asked her about O, the permit exemption verification. On page 22 of 81. And there is a form that she refers to. And I just realized I didn't really know what that form was, so I looked it up. And it turns out she has been using it. And I didn't know if other planning commissioners knows what it is, because it is referred to here. So it seemed like we should know what is this thing that's called out, and you?
So the Washington County Building Department has been pretty consistent in requiring that they, the residents get some kind of sign off from us before they even start reviewing the building permit. And a compliance permit with a $50 fee is not required for some cases where they're making changes inside a building or, you know, replacing a roof or adding a sun pump, things like that, which are not subject to any standards. For those things like that, or if there is a shed that's less than 200 square feet, they don't need a permit from us, but if a shed that is less than 200 square feet needs electricity inside, then they would need an electric permit from the building. At that point, they'll say, hey, we want to make sure that complies with your standard. So I, I created a form so that it's consistent and I can just have a form. It's easy to record, put it with the property. And it also helps the residents to have it with them if anybody questions. I don't see a permit. Why are you doing this? And they can say, hey, for the amount of work I'm doing, I don't need a permit. It's only my administrator verified that I'm exempt from permit standards. And it's been very helpful. The building department has expressed their, that it was convenient for them to track it. So, and it's easy and it's consistent form. And the residents have appreciated too, because it makes the process so much easier, where they don't have to come in, submit, and then wait for my response, whether it's exempt or need a permit. They usually come into the front desk, fill the form, and verify, I sign it, and give it right back. So the reason why I put it in there is to just make it more formalized. And even though the draft says, you know, it's, you should get it as a precaution. If somebody forgets to get a permit exemption, it's not the end of the world. We're not sending enforcement out there saying, hey, why you did it? It's just that whenever they realize that, oh, I should have coordinated, they can always come back and I can sign it and, you know, put it in the property record. It only becomes an issue when they figure out that, oh, I, I can, I don't need a permit for less than 200 square feet, and then they put it in the setback. And one of, I think there was a question, did anybody complain? We had a complaint about a shed which is less than 200 square feet that is within the side setback from a neighborhood right at the intersection of Non-Territorial and West Christian Church. And they had to move it because it's within the setbacks. If the ordinance was amended, then they wouldn't have to move it. So I don't know if, I, I know I took a small detour from your question, but it's just a one-page form. There is no fee to it. You're not required to say anything. You just fill the form, let us know what you're doing. And if I can, if I can confirm that you don't need a permit, it complies with any standards that you may need to comply with, I just sign off and give it.
Okay, okay.
I thought it was useful to know that, that the county, sometimes when people go to the county, they need that verification.
Thank you.
All right, I have a question. Page 21 of 81, utility structures. The comment came up tonight, but it's, this is a repeat comment that I brought up previously to refresh my memory. It had to do with generators, permit required, concrete pad required. And we've talked in depthly about that with portable generators versus permanent generators. We've had a long conversation about that, but please refresh my memory. I think it, it circled back to the Washington County Building Department ultimately is where, where the answer came from. But I don't remember what they said, be- because I still, I still don't agree with it. And I still think that the comment tonight was accurate, that a generator on a concrete pad is no different than my air conditioner on a concrete pad. And I think, and the, well, the last thing I have to say is in the past when we talked about this, there was a comment pertaining to the gas line and fires and this kind of thing. But then my comment to that was, that's between the homeowner and the insurance company. But can you help me out with what the county said on this topic?
So there's a little of a context. The permit for generator was required way before I started. Just because, again, ours current ordinance doesn't differentiate what kind of structures are exempt or what are not. It just, the only threshold we have is if it's less than 200 square feet, you don't need a permit. If it's more than 200, you, you need a permit. And then there's also a section on the rooftop electrical appliances or something like that that need a permit. Anyways, for some, my predecessors before me has interpreted the existing ordinance that generator falls under that electric utility appliance, not appliance, sorry, wrong word. Utility structures that would require a permit, and they've been issuing a permit. The county was questioned recently by some applicant. And then the county reached out to all the communities and asked them to, to request the planning commission to either make a determination whether do you require a permit or you don't require a permit, and have that clearly mentioned in the ordinance. And that's why I brought it up to the planning commission and asked to make a determination. Hey, moving forward, would you like to require permit? If yes, we have to make it obvious. Or if you don't want to require a permit, if you feel like, you know, it's similar to air conditioners or other units and you don't require a permit, then you have to specifically say you don't need a permit for generators. So that's the context. So historically, we've been requiring permits. County asked us to make it obvious, explicit in our zoning ordinance, and the question was brought up. The planning commission talked about it in great detail. And there was a discussion currently, if I misremember, regarding the amount of noise a generator creates versus an amount of noise air conditioner unit creates. And it was determined that, yes, we will require a permit because that's been a standard process and other communities were requiring. And, but the planning commission did consider flexibility from the setback departments, because they thought in some cases, the 30 feet allowable projection.
Doesn't our current draft say for permanent generators, permit yes, compliance with setback, yes. Portable generators, no permit, yes setbacks.
Yes, but in the, the language on page 19, 2B, allowable projection. That one says, "The zoning administrator may permit a maximum projection of five feet into the minimum required side yard for the act district." So, yes, what we did was we made it official of what we've been doing so far. We've been requiring permits for two, three years before I started. We made that official by putting it in the draft. But we're making it easier by giving a break from the 30 feet side yard requirement. But again, this is a draft. It's here for public input. You still have an opportunity to discuss. It's not final under it's adopted.
Did that answer your question, George?
Yeah, it does. I, it, it does answer it. I, I thought there was a, I thought there was other comment from the county, but I don't recall.
They just said, make your mind, put it in the ordinance, in other words.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I still stand to what I've been saying the whole time is, I, I don't think that it's an accessory structure, and I think it's no different than an air conditioner. And I also think that the portable generator makes more noise than a permanent one. And then when it comes down to it, if you're out of power, you're out of power, that's a critical, it's a critical state. And, and if it's a noise problem, you file a complaint on it. What are you supposed to do by the time your complaint is, is investigated? The thing turns off because the power's back on. And I, I, I just think it's, to me, it doesn't make sense. I don't think, I think it's the same as a air conditioner. And I, I guess I just, I don't, I'm not, I, I've not heard anything to change my opinion on that topic.
I would add to what George just said. I, I concur with that. I would actually think that an air conditioner has the potential to be more advantageous than the generator, because generator is very, very intermittent. Might not even hear the generator once in a entire year other than when it's weekly cycling to, as, you know, it's self-testing. Or an air conditioner runs all summer long. So I would, I think it'd be treated the same, however it's treated. So I would, I would adjust it for that. Think, they still require a building permit, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they require a building permit from the county, so the installation is not in the, it's, it's the nuisance aspect that we're talking about here. And I would, again, that they're equal, the generator has, has the opportunity to create a greater nuisance than the generator.
Do you feel the same about the setback?
I sympathize with the setback. The reason for setback is to mitigate the nuisance. So, again, I would, I guess my opinion would be that be required, you need the setback requirement, but not the permit requirement.
Mr. President, any other thoughts?
I'm confused though now, because I thought for the permanent generator, the permit that's required is from the county. Or, no, is it from us?
Only just asked us to make it clear, do you require one or don't require?
So it is from us.
Right, but they just asked us to, in the, we've been issuing permits for generators at least for the past three, four years before I started. And somebody questioned the county, you know, about permit requirements, and then the county reached out to all communities and said, if it's not in your zoning ordinance, whether one is required or not, can you please make it clear whether it's required or not?
So is it now the consensus of the commission that we do not require a permit for permanent generator?
But I think two questions, requiring a permit, compliance with setback. So when you are discussing the permits, you know, sorry.
Look, I want to attack at once, one at a time.
Okay, sorry. I didn't mean to.
Thoughts on permits? George and John both think that we should revise that to say no for a permit and attachment.
Cool.
I agree.
Yeah, probably a counter for permit exemption anyways.
So we're going to change under utility structures, number four, generated permanent, permit required from yes to no.
So you didn't ask me, but I agree.
But you got a thought anyway.
Doesn't matter.
So, on that same topic, compliance with setbacks. Kay will start with you.
So, I find that the nuisance aspect is important, so I would say yes, comply with setbacks. I have never lived anywhere where we lose power so often, so there's a lot of generator noise going on, but that's my view.
Everybody, commercials, everybody gets a generator out of force. You'll be happy. Your meat, your freezer will be happy. George, what do you think about that?
I, I, so, I, I don't, correct, that's right. And I don't see that a generator is going to be installed at the corner of your lot. Any, the generators that I'm aware of, they are in close proximity to where a air conditioner would be installed.
You have to have meter desks, so wherever your meter is, is where they're going to install.
It's not going to be far from that. So even if you have a larger property that happens to have a detached garage, it may be next to the garage, or it may be next to the house, but I'm not aware of a generator being anywhere near a setback.
I think that's would be a potential probability for smaller lots like R1, R2, because the setbacks for those lots are not thirty feet like ad district. So that would be a concern with setbacks.
So the point to that is, it, oh, I'm okay with setback?
Yeah.
That, that's fine, because I don't, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody installing a generator way far away from there to the gas meter.
As I recall, we had the discussion on setbacks. Both of those were in H O A's, or residential, planned residential district areas. So they're going to fall under those rules to begin with.
If they have any.
Right. Julie, what, what's your feeling on setbacks?
I agree with the setback.
Yeah, so, but it came up before, air conditioners are on all the time. I think John brought it up. So, air conditioners have to say no, the generators have to say yes. So, is that how you want to keep it, or you want to say yes for air conditioners now? They're on more often than generators are. That's my opinion.
Anybody thought before, my, my thought?
I guess, I don't know if, I don't have air conditioning, so I don't know if it's loud or not. Or, is it quieter, or, you know, is there a reason why it says no and yes?
When, when we did the initial research, when we talked about this a couple months ago, and I do, you know, when I looked up other community standards, it's not uncommon for people to not require air conditioners and setbacks. I know, but that is too restrictive, because that would require people to put in extra money to, you know, run the line someplace else, but it's not uncommon. I don't have a recommendation either way. It's just depends on how you wanted to apply for this function.
So, I'm not a heating and cooling guy, but what I do know is that if air conditioner is attached to your furnace via
Conduit.
conduit. So thus, that's why air conditioners are on, right outside your house, in a close proximity to how it can connect to your furnace. And again, from my experience with an HOA type of residence, the generators are installed either next to an air conditioner or not far from an air conditioner, which is buttoned up to the house.
That's pretty true.
Well, what you don't want to do here is put a yes there, send a bunch of properties in a non-compliance.
Yes.
So, if it's been no, leave it no.
Then the question is, why is the other one yes?
Well, has it always been yes for air conditioners?
Yes, like I said, they've been always considered as, the interpretation previously has always been consistent, according to utility structures, require a permit, comply with setbacks.
So if she's been doing that, or, so I mean, she's been doing that all along.
Even before me.
Probably okay. If you're going to keep an air conditioner as a no, you don't want to send properties in a non-compliance, that's what you're going to do.
The only thing I requested, so that, you know, it's helpful for the residents, is there are some situations where the building wall is right at the thirty-foot setback, and you need a concrete pad, which is five foot, which is why I asked you to put in some language to allow that encroachment, okay? Because when the building wall is right at thirty feet, based on how it's been interpreted and applying, it just felt like overkill to send them to ZDA for that five foot, so, which is why the draft includes that flexibility it gives, and again, they know it.
So, Paul, I thought your question was, if air conditioners know, why isn't generator also know?
That was my original question.
Yeah, so that's what I was also saying, well, okay, I don't know the answer.
But think through it, about maybe if air conditioners, yes, a lot of properties will go into non-compliance, which is a problem. So leave it no, properties are compliant, and everything.
But leave generators as yes.
Because it's been that way.
Oh, because it's been that way.
Shree, are you okay leaving it, I mean?
I, I think I'm happy that you're considering no permit required, it makes a lot of reason.
For, for generators. No, no, not the permit, setbacks.
Setbacks, yes. I would, I, I think, I've had, one of the ZDA meetings that happened a couple months ago, the whole conversation was about generators, because they were requesting expansion for setbacks, and then the resident showed up and he said, I hope he's building a wall right at the thirty-foot setback, and if he's going to put a generator, it will get closer to my house. So it is a concern. People are concerned about having their neighbor's generator next to their bedroom or space, so leaving that setback there does, doesn't change anything that's existing. If you remove that, then it will bring back those concerns.
So do we agree, yes, for generator setbacks, and no for air conditioning units? And since I have both, I will tell you that even permanent generators are way noisier than air conditioning units. Mine is in the setback.
So I appreciate that there's a reason that people are concerned about it, rather than just, well, we've always done it this way. So, if the, my, in my experience, generators make a lot of noise too, so I'm okay with this one, for that.
So we're saying, for the permanent generators, permit is not required, compliance with setbacks is required.
Yes.
For portable generators, permit is not required, compliance is also not required.
Right. And for air conditioning units, we're leaving that alone.
Leaving, oh, I'm confused, I'm sorry. Did we say yes for portable, right?
No, it was this third sentence, no, so permit no, permit no for both.
Right.
Setback yes, setback yes.
Yes, okay.
Did you get that?
Two no's and two yeses.
Correct.
All right, Shree, on page nineteen of eighty-one, E to B, subsections, one word, middle, middle there, I have to. Surprised that Kay didn't bring that up yet. You got, you got that?
Page nineteen?
Page nineteen, E to B, bills and sub-
Oh, okay, yes, yes, yes.
And page twenty-two, thirteen point eight, H four, section thirteen, one twenty-five, does that exist? It should be thirteen fifteen. Same page, on permit exemption verification, says for all accessory structures that uses and do not require a permit for property, or shall complete a permit?
Oh, shall submit.
Complete what, submit, okay, that was missing, right?
So I miss where we are.
Of page twenty-two?
Oh, from the top, first sentence.
Okay.
The, the word is missing between shall and a.
The second line.
Shall submit.
Shall submit, okay. On page twenty-one, N two, I'm looking at where it says examples include but are not limited to prefab storages and entry porches.
I think he just called it porches.
Just kind of called it porches. Did you hear it?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's Friday, it's been a long week. All right, I'm, I'm done. Mr. Worsman, anything you'd like to?
Yeah. If you, if you slip in, in, and attach a specialty structure.
What page?
Yeah, I have a word. It is nineteen, E to B. And this is what, uh, some people were concerned about earlier in the evening. I'm concerned about it too, I think it's a slippery slope. And the other thing, and I think I addressed this earlier in our deliberations, but it had to do with compliance with the building code and requirements for ingress and egress. A garage doesn't have the same standards as a bedroom, and I know that there are window size requirements for bedrooms that may not apply to your garage, because most garages have small windows. So, I would think that if we do this, we would be proving something that the acting compliance with other than the building code.
If somebody's converting a garage into a living space, they would have to apply for a building permit and build that window.
Talking about the egress window, an egress window?
Just, I think there are some requirements if it's a living space, with regards to just regular window ventilation and all that.
A garage is built to the same standard as a bedroom, so I think that's the reason is, that would have to apply for a building permit, and might apply to a garage before you would approve it.
Yes.
I, I, that's a reasonable answer. I, I still think that regulation of this would be virtually impossible, and I do think it creates a slippery slope for a permanent resident to occupy that space, use all the facilities in the primary, principal structure, and so you'd be essentially creating a additional bedroom, and I'm not sure that that's what we want to do.
Kay, anything you found in here that you want?
I, I'm listening to all the concerns about Airbnb's, and we've talked about this before, and we have a separate section of our zoning ordinance, I think, where we talk about short-term rentals, what we're able to say about that. But I, I wonder if we are in, sort of inviting people to do something like that, although it's not allowed in our ordinance in another place, so that, that's my concern as well.
I just wanted to refresh the reason why this started, and also wanted to point out that the people who showed up today are, they're all from Basely, residential district, where the potential for Airbnb, I, I, I agree, I mean, I understand that the potential for Airbnb is more attractive and more, but the draft amendment that was put in there kind of applies to entire township for the moment, so the planning commission may consider whether, A, do you want to just keep it to no sleeping as before, or do you want to just exclude Basely district from this requirement and allow it for other places? Because I think the other districts would be benefited by a certain, this option, because I've had multiple people who came in and wanted to be able to do that for various reasons, just, not just for guests. I had a resident who wanted, who wanted to create a bedroom or kind of semi, you know, like bedroom, a little bathroom for his disabled kid, for whom he wanted to be still connected to the house, but still have a sense of independence. And I couldn't allow that, because the current one clearly says no sleeping. And there was another example where they wanted it for their dependent parent, but the ordinance only allows that you can have sleeping in a detached structure for a dependent family, but it has to be a temporary structure, like a mobile home. We have a whole section that addresses that. But when you're trying to use a bedroom in a detached structure for your dependent family member, I can say no, because it's not a mobile home. So, this was prompted by me mostly because there are places where there are genuine valid reasons where people were asking not to allow an entire dwelling or an independent unit, just to allow a bedroom in a separate structure to give some sense of independence or price. So I think, when we talked about it, the major concern was enforcement. We've talked over an hour about this, you know, the major concern is enforcement. How are you going to enforce it? I mean, the interest in enforcement is varied. It depends on the topic. When it comes to one item, people want it to be enforcement. Comes to the other, they don't want it to be, you know, trust the people who are doing it, that's it. So I think, I would just ask planning commission to look into this, try to find a balance. The legal affidavit is legally binding, and we are not, like, as you all know, our enforcement is not proactive, we're not going around trying to find them, but neighbors need to watch out for each other. If somebody complains, we will seek enforcement. They can, they have a right to say, how do you prove it? You can come in it. But we do have a procedure in the Civil Infraction Ordinance for steps to seek the proper measures to do enforcement, but that's only case by case basis.
As I recall, that's how we came up with the affidavit.
Right.
Because we didn't want to blow up a heavy-handed enforcement.
Right. We wanted to give that flexibility for people, and putting the responsibility on them that I'm going to do the right thing, and by making it a deed restriction, it stays with the land. So we were trying to find, you know, so that, again, that's not a restrictive standard, that's something we're trying to accommodate, these special needs, or special occasional needs, you know, when you have guests or something. I do understand the challenge with Basely district, but again, this ordinance was drafted for the entire township, it is definitely within your discretion as how you want to exclude or include Basely, or poorly read it.
Should we make a reference to the Airbnb ordinance in this, so that people don't have to look to places? A lot of part of this ordinance.
Right. I will, I should have probably included a copy of the non-use affidavit. I did, did a test run with one of the, not test run, sorry, wrong word. I did get a draft from our attorney to use it, and I tweaked it a little bit, so it does say- So it does say that it can be only used for guests, and it has to be the, the, the primary residents have to be on the property when the guests are in the house. And it cannot be used for rental leasing purposes. And it's only for incidental use of the primary resident. And that's the language, that's in the non-use evidence. I'll include a draft of it when, you know, at the next step.
Any other comments? Like you?
No, I'm not, yeah. So it's free today, if I had an accessory building and I had, I'll call it a bonus room. Is that a lot of?
So the language, the current language says accessory spaces, structures, attached or detached, cannot be used for sleeping, dwelling, or lodging purposes. It does not exclude living. So you can have, you can use your garage for a recreational space, or a she shed, or a he shed, or an escape space. But it cannot be used for sleeping, dwelling, or lodging. And one might say, how do I know if somebody's not already just put in an air bed and using it for sleeping?
So compared to today's ordinance, is it true that the only thing that has changed is language that says you can sleep?
Yes.
In that structure?
Right, we're still restricting lodging, we're still restricting dwelling as existing, and we're only allowed sleeping if the resident agrees to sign the non-use affidavit, which again emphasizes no lodging, no dwelling, no short-term rentals. The resident is on the property while this is in use.
Okay, so is, is, is a resident allowed to put a kitchen in that space?
So that's when it gets into that definition of complete living facilities. So once he starts to put a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom, then it, it exceeds the threshold of sleeping. So I, my, my answer, my quick answer would be no.
So you would not allow that?
Right, because once you take it beyond sleeping, it falls into the definition of a dwelling. And only one dwelling is allowed per lot, so no. They can have a small kitchen and like, you know, coffee space, but, but as, once it starts turning into a complete living facilities, if it starts falling into that definition, then the use affidavit no longer applies. It will be treated as an additional dwelling unit, which is not permanent.
So could they have a bed and a restroom in that space? They can't, so the kitchen, once the kitchen's in there, that's not independent.
That's another dwelling which is not allowed.
Commissioners, the I have a motion. We're on page sixteen, if any of you want to add it.
Thank you.
Now may I ask my more question? So it's free, this is the text we're looking at, is there going to be any update to it that you believe is needed that is of significant to the planning commission or you?
In this, not, not that we haven't discussed yet?
No, that we've been discussing and talking about.
Uh, I think. Just whether if you want to exclude BLLR or include BLLR. Just after I've explained how the use affidavit works, if you think that's something, then always. Always, if it becomes an enforcement issue, it challenges us all. Maybe make a recommendation. You don't have to change the language, but may acknowledge the comments, but you make a recommendation to the board. Or something, is that the question?
Yes, so now I have a question. So it doesn't seem it can exclude one area, but it has to be based on last act itself or something to be across the board. So to me, that is something that we should discuss further.
Uh, you're right, I didn't mean to suggest one way or the other. I just said that I don't feel like I got clarity on where the planning commission stands on that point.
I don't feel that we're ready to send it to the board. I think we have some additional discussion based on tonight's comments. But I'm willing to entertain a motion based on what the commissioners might think also. My turn.
So I, I agree that we've made some progress here, but we still have at least that one open issue. So I, in the matter of text amendment twenty-three, ZTA zero-one, a motion is made to postpone consideration of the proposed amendment to sections two-ten, three, thirteen-fifteen, thirteen-eighteen of the Webster Township zoning ordinance. Further discussion is required based on the items that have been summarized by the township planner at tonight's meeting throughout our discussion.
Go ahead.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'm sorry, okay.
Aye.
John?
You didn't allow any further discussion, but on the motion, aye.
Aye, on the favor. Thank you.
I'll go get the clarifying page from the patio setbacks and a copy of the non-use affidavit, is the length of it?
On old business, keeping of animals, section thirteen point two-five. At the last meeting, a public working group brought forward a draft that I was distributing at that time. And I had asked the commissioners to review it and bring their comments to this meeting so that we could put them into the minutes. So I'd like to start and just go around the room. George, you're first. And these are just comments, these are, we're not discussing because we have other things to do tonight that affect this.
So we're going to just record the comments?
Please. George?
I have no further comment in what's written in the draft.
I have a couple questions. Other additional?
Just those comments.
Yeah, okay.
Discuss, you'll, this will come here in about three minutes. We'll get through this part.
I have no more.
Brett, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the, in this ordinance, they talk about a lot of nuisance in the animals. Someone thinking, oh, that should be taken out of the zoning ordinance and put in the nuisance ordinance. Zoning ordinance is based on, which you can do where you can, right? Nuisance, I feel that should be in the nuisance ordinance. So, there's lots of, uh, him and the animals and, uh, the nuisance of the animals, the neighbors and stuff, that's my comment.
Thank you. Paul, any comments you'd like to, regarding this draft?
Sure, um, on item one, are there any limitations on coming here from both sides? This is a comment. As I read it, my comment is, it looks like this ignores, um, what do they call them? Different form of a gap, the way it's written. So I guess my question is, does, does P one ignore the gaps altogether? The categories, category four. That's, does P one ignore category four requirements?
Can you speak up please so she can hear?
Yeah, yeah.
Under P one, does, does that ignore category one, category four requirements of the gaps? Under B three, the keeping of horses, when I look at section twelve point one, that requires you have five acres, does that still apply? If it does, that conflicts with the rest of this ordinance of allowing animals in smaller properties.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, where, where are you, where?
John?
He's going through the draft that was provided at the last meeting.
Yeah.
It's too fast for us.
What, what page?
Uh, it's page thirty, whatever number we have.
Thirty. It's B three, so the keeping of horses shall be subject to provisions of twelve point one hundred. And that section of twelve point one hundred, they have to have five acres for a horse. That conflicts with the rest of this ordinance. What the century says, it's not like property size doesn't matter for your lifetime. So if I had four acres, I think that I can't have a horse, as I read this. That's a question I have. Um, regarding, uh, let's go to C. It's the same thing with poultry, because I mentioned it under lifestyle. Do the gaps now apply again for category four for poultry? In ag, ag, agribusiness and agriculture? Category four properties in those zones? Under C two. Forget, I, forget that, this guy's lettered wrong, go to H thirty-one, go to E.
Thirty-one?
H thirty-one, go to eighty-one, go to eighty.
I totally lost, I don't have.
Okay, what says thirty-one?
Um, okay.
I know, there's only E.
Okay.
Sorry, that, oh, already started, started. The one, the letter is wrong, it's done. It says roosters shall only be permitted for meat production. That's not enforceable. Having ten chickens for fifty years, any rooster I have, whether I keep it for eight weeks or eight years, I'm going to say it's for meat production. So on, uh, D, there are no nuisances. In the middle, we talked about annual waste shall be removed and disposed of. I kind of like to know what that means, where are you going to dispose it? It should say dispose of on the property, because once you remove it from the property, then, um, there's some other ordinance language that's going to apply there once you remove it. If you take, if you take waste off of your property, if the, if the committee looked under intensive livestock operations in the ordinance, they would find language that says if you have to remove waste from your property, then you're in intensive livestock operation. And those are only allowed in agribusiness. So I question that statement, could we need some clarity? That's, that's a hard one, I'll.
Thank you. Okay, are there any comments you'd like to add to this?
Yes. So I appreciate the working group providing a draft. But I learned, I think I learned at our, um, right to farm, right to farm training, is that, um, except as otherwise provided, so the right to farm acts twenty-eight, six, four, seven, four, says except as otherwise provided in this section, a local government unit, so not an act maintained or enforced in ordinance, regulation, or resolution that conflicts in any manner with this act, or generally accepted agricultural and management practices developed through this act. So when I read the intent of this, to me, it seems like we are interpreting the, whether it's commercial or not. So my question is, do we even have the authority to do this? And that's why I was looking forward to seeing the responses from our experts. But since we just got it tonight, I haven't had a chance to look at that. So I don't know what their response is.
And that's part B that we're going to.
Yeah, so, um, so that would be my comment. My other comment is, um, so this in section B also, where it talks about the other zoning, and then also when we get to chickens, it really relies on the gaps. And the other thing I learned at the training is that these gaps are applied throughout the state, which, and there are very different conditions in different places. So the actual application is very science-based and very nuanced. And even the calculation of animal units is not necessarily the easiest thing. So my, what I'm wondering is, is it really, is it really a benefit for people who just want to have some chickens and maybe a cow and a goat to have to understand these gap things? Or, or could it be simpler? And the reason I question that is whether that's simple or not. I looked at all twenty township ordinances for keeping of animals in Washtenaw County, and fifteen out of twenty of them do have some sort of small table for people who just have a few acres and want to have a few animals. So my question, my comment is, is this really so straightforward for people who have two to five acres and want to have a few animals? To me, it seems rather complex. So I have a lot of, but when we discuss it, I want to try to understand it better. But my initial impression from the training is, hmm, it seems rather complex. So I, I would like to have the opportunity to ask more questions and discuss it.
Thank you. John, any comments you'd like to?
Yeah, uh, first of all, I'm all in favor of, uh, allowing some keeping of animals on parcels less than five acres. But if you read this, this draft, it basically eliminates all township regulations of management of animals other than under the nuisance ordinance. And I'm not comfortable with that. I think that, uh, as I, as I said in the big time, all, everybody has property rights. And that means that for people who live on two acre flats, maybe they don't want to live next to a pigpen. And they have property rights too, and this totally ignores their property. Because what this says is, you know, in all the zoning districts, they live in livestock. Making kept of all locations regardless of whether such life factors for commercial or personal, all locations means any two acre lot. And my site selection criteria in the ordinance would apply because of this totally does is, uh, it's basically women extract the farm because it just says everybody does extract the farm.
Thank you, get that.
So, uh, this is an action, and I think everybody knows that I was part of the group that worked on this. And it is an action that's certainly easier for the township because township basically allows you to handle the issue unless, unless there is a nuisance. And if you listen to the presenter, uh, from Hengar, he made it pretty clear that nuisances were a challenge to report because, uh, what smells like a pigpen, if one person might be perishing to somebody who loves the pigs. I just like that we need to be cognizant that everybody has rights here. And I'm all in favor of allowing some keeping of animals, but I'm now in favor of allowing, I'm in the spirit of keeping of animals.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I add some comments now?
Absolutely.
Um, I want to add addition to John, because I, that caught my.
I want to add addition to John, because I, that caught my eye too. Because looking at B one, because I grew up on agriculture. We actually looked into actually adding some more farm animal areas to the farm. Endar came out and told us, did a site selection and told us where it could go. But if we're looking at this, we could've went anywhere and then it would've been by neighbors. You know, where Endar said wanted us to do it on the other side of the property. So this just leaves that wide open. And what are people gonna do when there's six hundred hogs, you know, two hundred feet from their house? This says, if it's eggs, you can do it, right? Am I reading that right? Open side door. Need some clarification.
I do not wanna comment on this draft, and here's why. Not, I was part of the working group. However, it's Sri's memo that she put on top of this, and that's why we have a piece that was put in front of us just today that we have not had a chance to review. At the recommendation of some citizenry, we engaged Ryan, whatever his last name is, at the MSU extension. And asked and Sri and Mr. Kingsley and I, well, I'll assume call with him. We asked him to look at both the drafts. The one that came in from the working group, the one that was the original draft that we had had before this body many times and went before the board and came back. He has provided written comments that are upon this piece. However, we have not had a time, a chance to review them. And rather than take this body's time and labor for this tonight, my recommendation would be that we take the comments we have heard on the draft that was provided from the working group. Take the time individually, and it'll be in the packet for the public to look at Ryan's comments and bring it back to the June meeting and put it all in bold one time and stir up the soup and cook something. Is Kay?
I like that idea. And I have one additional idea to throw out, something else. So I know the board in their motion did not wanna give us a consensus input. But is there, we've gotten input from citizens, from other people. We have our own input, but is it, is there a way to get input from individual board members? So we have some idea of what they're thinking about.
Yes, I have got a meeting at request of Mr. Kingsley, who gave me some points that he would like to include and have considered.
And what about the other board members?
I have not heard from the other board members. They had this for a year, and my view is that they have plenty of time to give us input. They'll welcome to, if they'd like to meet separately and give us input.
Or individually, maybe give input, right?
Two of them are here tonight, they can give us input. This isn't a public hearing, but they certainly can make comments because they're the board and we work at their best.
Or they could submit comments to you and Sri that could be included.
They could do that too.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I, permission to speak? Technically, the board is not supposed to provide comments while the planning commission is still deliberating on a topic. So I know this has been going on over a year, but we cannot, um, provide any kind of influence on what you're thinking. However, if you request their input, given this time where we are, because it went to the board and it came back to you. So now you can ask for their input at this time. Because the question the planning commission need to consider is the input provided by the board, which simply states, refer to the March fifth residents' input and revise the ordinance. So the question for you guys is, is that enough input for you? Because the residents who came to the March fifth meeting are proponents of a certain type of regulation. Have you, um, so now that it was on the board's agenda and came back to you, one of the options that you could consider is maybe sending out a survey to the board to gather their input, so that they're not deliberating on the topic. They're providing independent input because you requested their input. And that can be part of your discussion and provide some guidance. I'm just putting it out there for planning commission for consideration. But if you decide what you, what you've heard, what you've seen is enough, then you don't have to do that.
So the reason I'm asking is when we, the planning commission, worked on this before, one of our focus, our focus areas included, could we provide more opportunities for animals for people with less than five acres? Two to five acres, and what about those chickens in residential? And when I read the March fifth input, that's really the same input. There's, the residents are saying, we want more options, and what about those chickens? So what's at issue here is there's different ways to achieve that, and which way will we proceed with? So I just thought, since we had already proposed one way and here's another way, I don't know if it's helpful to have a little bit more guidance. If that's not possible, okay.
As I said, my view is that this has been going on long enough that there's been enough input, opportunities for input from a number of people. I think, but I could be wrong, you guys get a vote? That we have nothing in front of us, that we ought to be able to deliberate and hammer this thing out. If you would like to send something to the board, I can work with Sri and we can put a draft to the board members and have him provide any input.
Oh, I'm not suggesting a draft, I'm suggesting a survey.
Sure, yeah.
Well, what do other people think? Do we have enough?
Yes, I agree. I'd rather not send another draft to the board having to mind read what they want. I think when they sent us this work back, we should've gotten, we should've gotten critique on the work we gave them. To the point where we could look at it and say, okay, they don't like this, they like this. Take the public's comments in addition to that and craft something. Right now, we don't know what the board wants, you didn't get it from the board. So basically what Sri said, I think we should maybe postpone any work on this until the board gives us their input on what we should craft.
There are two ways you can do it. You can ask the board to discuss at their next meeting, provide input, which would delay the process. Or we could run a survey in the meantime and have a summary of it by your next meeting, which would keep this going.
Yeah, I don't wanna wait for the board, except that David Farm, maybe we blow a whole bunch with that.
Right, so that's why I was recommending a survey rather than, you know...
Well, a survey, but we need comments. We don't have to be A B or C, but we need, we need, we need that from the board.
They're trying to take the board out of us. But is it their job to tell us what to do?
They didn't like what we said, though.
No, some people on the board didn't like it. I don't, I don't know that it's anybody's job to tell us what to put in the draft. We're Congress.
But they approve, we don't pass it.
I understand that, but just like the ones walking into Congress and going, do this. Isn't that a separation of powers somehow? I could be wrong, but...
I'm thinking, since we gave them something, if they could make a few points about what they liked and didn't like. Not...
I don't disagree.
That, that would be useful, because we got a lot of different options here.
Sure.
So I think everybody is correct, I don't think anybody is wrong. What I think should happen is this MSU extension packet, my question is, can the board see this as a part of the survey?
Yes, I wanted to, I'm waiting for my turn to see if I have the right time to talk. I think it's the next agenda I am. So I talk about that.
I don't know whether going through it tonight is worth it.
It's not, okay, then can I provide comments now?
Okay, hold on, let me, let me just finish my thought. Is, this MSU extension expert conversation is an important piece of this puzzle.
Correct.
Okay, and, and just so everybody knows too, I thought we should not even be talking about this tonight until we receive this. Okay, I didn't even wanna talk, I didn't even wanna have this meeting about this tonight. I thought it should be removed from the agenda. This is an important piece. Now, I agree that, I don't think we need to talk about what the board has not done. I think we need to talk about, we still want their input. And this has gone on way too long, and this needs to be streamlined. And we need to know what the board is thinking. If they read this topic here, then I'm looking forward to reading it, that will help clarify people's thoughts. Because quite honestly, when I read this, the draft, it may get shredded. I, I don't know, I haven't read it, okay? But I, I think to streamline this, if a survey could go to the board, and I'm saying that, you know, under the proper protocols, put the, put the, put this, put the MXU extension packet with a survey and ask for individual board comments or input or whatever the verbiage is, they can come back to us so that when we, when we formulate the next draft, it's a one and done. So that we streamline this and stop talking about this for the next year, so that it can get approved. And the second thing I have on that is, this might sound half crazy, but there has been discussion that based on what the judge said, there's been conversation that all we need to do is just add chickens into it. So my question to this for streamlining is to, to allow the people that need or want chickens right now, should we do this in two phases? The first phase is just add a chicken section, so that those people who want chickens can have them right now. And then we can spend the next ten years talking about the rest of this thing. Because right now, the people that want chickens are in a holding pattern and they can't have them, and it's not fair. So, I'm done.
That is one of my recommendations in the memo.
So we could add chickens and we could also add a table for two to five acres of animals as an intro thing to what we already have. Anyway, thank you.
George, I, I'd have made it clear all along that I would be favored to do exactly that. There doesn't seem a lot of industry to let that happen, but I, uh, I see no reason to require five acres for chickens.
So if you'd be willing to put together a survey to the board that includes the draft that came from Mr. Coffey?
I would love to.
Thank you very much. If you'd be willing to send it?
What I would suggest here is, number one, I didn't get a chance to review this extension document until right time. And there's more to it than just a cursory...
That's why, that's why I said at the beginning of this section, when we discussed this.
So I was speaking, and we had policy of not accepting things to review on the day of the meeting. I agree. So, so I think just on the basis of that, we need to postpone further discussion. I have no problem with soliciting comments from the township board. I don't think it'd be valuable. I am concerned, and I agree with the chair, but soliciting comments is one thing, but soliciting dictation from the township board is something else. And I certainly would not want to see anything like that. But the other thing is, I would suggest that we come up with a draft to just amend the current ordinance to change it in a way that'll allow us for keeping of chickens in some capacity all the way down to one acre lots. Why couldn't you have five chickens on one acre lot as long as they stayed there? This is, then the problem in the past is that animals encroaching on other people's property. And that's a subdivision from being able to maintain. If you don't maintain them properly, then you're creating a nuisance, and that's a problem and you can deal with it. But going back to the basic question here, I think totally relying on a nuisance ordinance is a mistake. I think we need to maintain some level of management in order to protect everybody's rights, not just the living rights of people who want all animals, but of those who don't.
So Sri, what do you think you're gonna be doing next?
I already have some questions, I had one. So I'll put that together, send your draft for your review, and then we'll send it out to board so that we can keep this moving, bring it back at the next meeting. I'm happy to do that. Uh, I, I don't wanna share.
In your memo, you did mention breaking out chickens. Do you wanna address that now?
Yes, so I think for the same reasons, because, you know, like the planning commission has spent over a year. You know, I emphasized working very diligently and patiently on the draft before it was sent to the board. And I know the working groups spent some considerable time and thought, and they felt it was frustrating that, you know, there were comments made on it. Imagine the time we've, the planning commission, spent on it for over a year. And this was really, and it took a year because the planning commission recognizes the sensibility of this issue, the complexity of this issue, because there are many layers to consider. You have to consider the property rights, you have to consider the nuisance, the character of each district, the potential of nuisances, the challenges with enforcement. And last but not the least, the relationship and conflicts with state laws, animals at large, MMDR, GAMS, right? So many factors, that's why this is taking long and this is given a different pedestal than other amendments, which those are very specific and easy to address. But the decision you make as a planning commission on this one before you send it back carries significant weight. I wanted to emphasize on that. I'm not, it's, my memo was not, was just trying to refresh your memory as when you started a year ago, this is what you started with. So just don't lose sight of that when you're looking at the new working draft. And I know, I understand, I'm not a farmer, but I'm, I'm, I'm a very, I'm a learner, I always aim to learn, I'm a researcher. So before I put forward any recommendation, I do tons of research. I dream about this when I sleep. I've spoken with Ryan Coffey from MSU Extension. He has extensive experience. He's one of the authors of the GAMS. And he's been advising communities when they come across challenges with right to farm protection claims. And I've spoken with Mike Osniak so many times that I was able to get him here to do the training. By the way, the Endar trainings are online, I've shared a link. And I've spoken with my peers, I've spoken with my peers at Michigan Planning Association, and I've attended trainings. After I did all that, I put my memo together to make sure you're not losing the sight of what you've done and where we are headed. And I agree with it. And Andrea did raise some good points in her memo that, you know, questioning what's the urgency to address all the other things. So the easier way, you have a couple of options. One, don't do the same thing we've done again, and we'll be back in the same position again. So it's okay to take just a month and then do it right. Or you can scale down the amendment, like member Goodman suggested, Bestman suggested, I recommended. Address the priority issue, which doesn't have a lot of ongoing violations or history. Address that first, and then take your time to address the livestock. Because the current ordinance is fine, there are no complaints on it. And you've seen the enforcement summary, the majority of... The majority of complaints we have have to do with manual management, nuisance, and animals trespassing onto neighbors' property. The current complaints are not about site acreage. Site acreage becomes an issue while investigating a nuisance ordinance. Nobody complained that my neighbor has animals on it to their property. The only complaint, my neighbor's chickens came onto the property, and then when we tried to investigate, we realized, oh, they are on property lists and five acres. So I would say those are your options. You can simplify it, just carve out the part, do what needs to be done to do the other part, or, but I would strongly recommend getting Boards input. Because ultimately, given the type of topic it is, you do need their sense of where they're standing because whether they want it to be too restrictive or less restrictive, or a little bit more flexible. I'm not asking them to tell you how to define utensils, how to define standards, how to set regulations. But you should at least know a general sense of, do they want it to be more restrictive or less restrictive? Because ultimately, the Board will make final choices on enforcement-related issues and any legal issues. So my more than two cents.
Did anything change on what we said the plan was gonna be?
But I just had to get it out to clarify some of the comments from before that every word I say comes from a lot of research.
We are here to move on to the next discussion item, Sam. It's getting late.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, do you need a motion?
Yes. You want a motion?
Oh, yeah, we're past nine thirty. May we have either a motion to extend or postpone with further discussions until the next meeting?
I would be opposed on the discussion of the proposed Keeping of Animals Amendment. Pending review of additional materials provided by the Michigan State Extension Service and potential input from Lord Cussey.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion carried. Thank you, John. We are past our typical nine thirty closing time. Would you folks like to continue, or move these items to the next meeting? Anybody? Four o'clock comes up here.
It does. You know what I'm gonna say during the end?
Well, I'm on, she's on my side of the table.
Oh, yes, she is.
So if these things aren't urgent, could we, if there's something that's quick or not, or it seems like it's a verbal update, and then there's a request from a resident, I don't know if there's something we really need to urgently talk about tonight. Or, no, then?
I do have one. I want to confirm what we have on our agenda for June. Continuation of the keeping of animals with Board comments and a review of the MTA input. Or no, MSU extension.
Are we bringing in accessories? You're missing, sorry.
Yes. Further discussion on accessory structures with updated draft. Natural features is bringing forward a discussion item, correct?
Or input, yeah, the natural resistance.
Shipping containers then will be on there. We might have more than just a verbal update after the thing.
I think this can be a question to tell you, I think.
Oh, I'm on discussion items.
Right. I don't think I'll have time to put anything together.
Okay. That was a question mark, it's not a message. I do have one comment, and it's real quick one. I don't know if any of you have, it came up in somebody's discussion case. I'm up on blight and how topical it is. The MTA on June 5th is having a noon time, and that is noon time updates. You can go to the MTA site. It is free for commissioners and Board members to attend because we have a master call in. But the discussion is on blight. I've registered, so. It's June 5th. And several lunch hour, they always do a lunch hour noon to one. And that's all I have on comments.
For the President of the President, I did post the NSH packet online where you usually get your planning permission packet. So it's available.
I'm at this courtesy of, you've got that resident here on 16. Did you wait two and a half hours?
Was that resident here?
I don't know.
No.
They're not here?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's right, it is.
Give my time, man. I was gonna say let him speak, but I've waited two and a half hours.
We have one more item, time for public comment at the end of the meeting. Bring that page, please.
So thanks for my discussion. I guess I would just encourage you to read this, I'm sorry, Pat Wilson. I would encourage you to read this in the same way that you read all stuff you get from Sri. It's a lot of the children from your own discussion is pretty hostile to this and not taking it in good faith, but big stuff from Sri.
We haven't seen yet. We haven't looked at it.
You haven't seen this?
Oh, the draft?
The draft.
Oh, I thought.
You have the draft, which is what we're discussing. And that, you know, questions about like newer management, like if you look at the following sentence saying that it's that way shall be moved and disposed of in such a manner not to carry to public private, just like, so that's like an example. And I think to your point, it's like, I think, you know, B1, again, on page 30, I believe, or maybe it's been, but, you know, we could very, I mean, obviously, we can't supersede what the state says. And that, you know, livestock can be kept regardless of whether livestock are kept for commercial or for personal use. And then following into, well, at nine under two, so that livestock can only be kept at locations that can provide with selection use. And that would carry forward for poultry. And so recall that poultry, and to this ludicrous point, horses are considered livestock by GAMS. And so anybody that has a horse can claim to be a commercial farm and get around a five acre minimum. And I think what you all and the township really has to keep in mind is this distinction between commercial and non-commercial. And that GAMS does not care about the size of your parcel. They care about the density of people around you. And the only reason that the Morningstar litigation continues is that you both have such horrible attorneys that you couldn't drive that bus through that gap, right? Like, if the Morningstar attorneys could have figured out how to articulate if they sold an egg, which shame on them, then this would be over. And so you all, I think, are missing that point when you start thinking about minimum acre sizes. Because that's, that's, that's just such a silly thing. And then if you look at the Ag District, like how many two acre houses are lots of them, right? Like, there's actually several that are about four acres that have really very few people living around them. And so think of those people, right, and their property rights. When there's no one living around them, and then you tell them they can't have a goat. Meanwhile, someone that has, you know, a five acre lot, they put their horse on an acre, they can have that horse, right? So.
All right, okay. Thank you. Welcome back.
In Chalston, 458 Carroll Road. I had a few points that I wanted, that I wanted to make. One of them was on the ease of understanding GAMS. When I first, like, looked through GAMS, there's a lot of stuff here, and it's hard to figure everything out. One of the nice things that GAMS has that even the township's ordinance sometimes has, I can talk to MDDAR, and I can say, hey, here's what I'm doing. And they'll say, well, you comply in these ways, you don't comply in those ways. Switch it like this, and then you'll comply. And so you have someone who's an expert, more of an expert than I or any of us here are on animal uses, that's able to help you understand all of the permitted uses that your property has according to the GAMS rules. And that's one of the nice things about GAMS as opposed to the township coming up with their own little list of how one can use the property. The other thing is, MDDAR is constantly updating their GAMS. They're making it better with whatever scientific studies are being done and things like that. And that's a wonderful weak resource to have. The township doesn't need to be experts in animal usage and what's good for animals. And you don't need to do all of the research that they've done on it because we have an expert body that says, yeah, this is really bad for animals. This is good for animals. That's great. Plus, as Pat mentioned before, yes, the township doesn't have the ability to say, oh, you're commercial or you're not commercial. That's determined by a judge. But if you decide that you're gonna impose rules that are more strict than what GAMS imposes, then if a property says they're commercial, it has to go to court. And it can take a long time in courts. And most of these things are won in the appeals courts. That's a lot of time and money, especially because if the property wins the court case, the township has to pay all of the lawyer's fee that the property undergo underwent, and all of those fees. And I think that's just like saying, well, we can't tell, we aren't gonna make a claim on whether they're commercial or not. So we're gonna have them have to go around and sell one egg so that they can go through a whole bunch of court cases. And the township can pay a ton of money at the end. Just doesn't seem like a very good way to go about this. It seems like it's a, it's an annoying ordeal to put everyone through. One of the other things that I want to say, which is a little more broad than just the animal ordinance thing, one thing I really liked about the animal ordinance proposal that was put forward by the Subcommittee is that beginning section with the background and the additional considerations. I think we saw with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was put forward, there was a lot of people, residents of the township, that were confused on what exactly is it doing? What complaints exist? Why are we even discussing this? What exactly is this changing? And I think something like that background and additional conditions that was in the animal ordinance one would go a long way to help that. Because then anyone coming forward and saying, oh, a lot of people have been bothered by X, Y, and Z, that's great to know. Now I see what they're doing. And I think that's super helpful for us as a public.
If I can refer to the previous memos, you will have the entire context for the accessory structures.
Okay, okay. The last thing that I wanted to make note on is the violation and citation percentage difference between them. I think something that could be helpful in just seeing how violations are going well or poorly in the township is how the violation is resolved. Because I think there's a big difference between a violation that's resolved because, because I think a lot of residents don't actually know the difference between a violation and a citation. And if you get a violation and you're told, you have to stop doing this or else you have to pay a fine, I think there's a lot of residents that are just gonna be like, well, I guess I have to stop doing this. And it seems there's not really much difference between those residents who get a violation and stop doing it because of the force of the law or the feel of the force of the law, and someone who gets a citation is an intensive stop to do it because of that. And so I think the difference between a violation notice going up and a solution being found that makes everyone happy, and a violation going up and the person charged, the property owner, backing away are different types of things. That's all.
Thank you.
Matt Gilz, 505282, the road. His first comment is all sorts on this draft. I'd say thank you. This is a great draft. I'm much in favor of it. If I was in charge, I'd send it to the Board right away, not touch it. But, I don't know, so, herein. I think one thing that I would say is that you remind ourselves that the Planning Commission and the Board are, is in charge of this township. Not a theoretical township, not a future township, but the current township as it stands. So with that in mind, there's been comments about the idea of, well, what if we do this, we're gonna have six hundred pigs running around in those property. Well, that's not the case, right? We don't have that now. We won't have that if you allow us to go through. Because as noted, the current problems that we've seen on these, on these ordinance is that it's been nuisance of chickens or animals running across into this property. Most people that have chickens with less than five acres don't know that they're not compliant. We saw that at the March fifth meeting, right? If we have six hundred pigs, that's a commercial farm, I would presume. No one's getting six hundred pigs themselves. Right, that's the right to farm, man. So we're making these like, well, what if scenarios? Well, we don't need to do that. We have a township here. Let's plan zoning ordinances that fit our township as it stands, and as we've seen it act. No people with less than five acres want chickens. They have them right now. I have less than five acres, and I have chickens. I'm saying this because the township right knows about it. But, so why are we saying, well, what if this happens? Like, it's not gonna happen. It hasn't happened yet. Let's stop saying it's gonna happen. Let's address this. We're not experts in animal management. I'm not. I presume you guys are not either. We're not experts in determining commercial versus residential. Let's take that off of the plate of the Board, of the zoning administrator, if anybody has township. Let's give it to the experts, those that, you know, MDDAR, who, the judge, if there's a case. Let's stop wasting township time and money determining how many eggs someone sold or didn't sell. I think that's why I like this, that's why I really like this draft. Because if it does that, it removes a township as a middleman. It allows things, it says, GAMS, MDDAR, you're the expert. You tell us how many animals can be allowed on acreage. You tell us what is commercial, the judge tells us what is commercial. You tell us how they're supposed to be treated. We'll just make sure that people are following those things. And if we don't, we bring someone expert. It's hard to say that. I also want to say it's not just chickens. That's the majority of complaints, because that's the easiest animal to get. But I also have goats. I also have horses too. There should be more than just goat, chickens are allowed for less than five acres, right? You can have a lot of animals on less than five acres that can be commercial or residential. I don't think GAMS is too difficult to understand. If it's too difficult to our residents to understand, then I presume it's also too difficult for you guys to understand. So we should be making up new ordinances or lists or tables for less than five acres. Because who's to say that you're bound to GAMS, right? And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Good luck for the rest of it.
Gary Cook, 6772, MAST. You know, you got three Board members here. He's a representative from the Board. If you want to ask questions or get input on this animal question. So get back to the accessory structures. Now I'm a little more confused because I think you just took air conditioners and took them out of the setbacks. And the generator, they're just gonna stay the way they are. And then Mr. Kleinsman brought up, if you build a new house and you want to have a bonus room above the garage, that's considered accessory structure? Now I gotta come to the township and tell it I have the data that's gonna run with the land? Is that what I'm understanding?
Gary, I'm happy to sit with you next week. Do you mind coming in the office? We can go over the draft.
Well, I would do that.
That would be best used.
That's why we do public meetings, so that it should be clear cut. And I'm so confused on the little sheds that are less than two and a half feet. You said they never allowed in the setback. And in your notes that I can find online from April, you're taking them, they can't be in a setback, but you don't need a building permit. And to clarify, the building permit on the generators from Washoe County, they do require a building permit. And the same for an air conditioner. So I don't know why they came to you and said, make it one way or the other. Because the township has no clarification, anything on building permits. So were they asking you, are you gonna require a zoning permit for a generator? Is that what they were asking? Because it's two different things.
I'll answer the questions if you come to the office. This is a public, it's an important answer, but.
Okay, but it's just getting more confusing. And. Okay, but it's just getting more confusing and I don't, I don't understand. I don't know now if you are out an air conditioner without a permit or you're not in a generator. So I guess if you're gonna send it to the board, come to the board meeting.
We're redoing the draft. It'll be an impact for you to look at. It's changing things that we discussed tonight. So I think some of the information you're assuming from April will not be in effect when you.
Okay, so tonight, Mr. Kleinsen brought up that if you have a bonus room above your garage, which most houses I've been built in the last twenty-five years have one, now I gotta come to the township and I gotta fill out an affidavit? Is that, are we gonna come, should I come next month to see what the final draft is, I guess? That's what I'm asking.
It'll be posted on the lab before the meeting. You don't have to come to the meeting to see it.
One last thing. Then Whitney, Whitney made up a sign in her early eighties and thinks there's one down in Massacre yet that says rural Webster Township. I mean, we're almost, should get rid of that and just say the city of Webster because this animal thing, I don't even understand why you can't have, what if I wanted to raise three pigs and I had two acres and I wanted to sell them at the end of the season? You can't even do that, correct? The same with a cow or a horse, like Paul brought up. It's like, if you can take care of the animal, it doesn't matter, I mean, I could have a horse on one acre, you could feed it hay all summer long and all spring and you could have it. I don't, I don't understand why we even had the five acres in there, why that got put in there years ago. But you could have a small animal and you can do it. Somewhere we got the small and large mixed up and a pig is considered a large animal, so you can't have it unless in five acres. And I think the township needs to change a few things. You know, there is a little section in there for four age animals, but you could just get pigs and say, well, I'm gonna do it for four age. I mean, who's gonna, how do you enforce it anyhow? And who's it hurting? And if the neighbor's chickens are gonna lose, that's why everybody has a dog. So, all right, so I guess, I don't know what to do at this point. Am I supposed to meet with Sri or are we gonna have another, just all gonna be at next month's meeting or?
On next month's meeting agenda that we just discussed.
Okay.
Additional discussion on keeping of animals, which will bring the MSU extension information, have Sloss's comments, Sri's additional input, discussion about separating chickens versus other animals. There will be additional discussion on accessory structures to quantify exactly the information that you were asking about.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Okay. Good night.
Good night. Would anybody else from the public like three minutes to make their comments? Three, three.
I'll try and be fast, Tom. I know your time, man. I'm a little sunburned too from the last couple of days. Peter Stevens, seventy-five, hundred, Charles Lane. Just listening through this meeting, I guess first I would just like to comment to Tom and especially George, thank you for the work you did on this draft that was put forth. I generally share the sentiment that this body should be able to deliberate on this keeping of animals ordinance and make a decision and put it forth instead of waiting additional time. I agree that input from the board might be interesting, but I think guidance and direction from the board would be inappropriate. You've been given this task. You've gotten information from the residents of the township. You've gotten information from experts. I think that, as Tom said, you all have the information for you. Make a decision about it. Don't just keep mopping it down the road, please. What else occurred to me as I, as I'm listening to the accessory dwelling units, the keeping of animals, even talks around the generators and, and air conditioners is I'm just hearing more and more barriers being erected to residents using their own property. I heard the discussion about the accessory dwelling units tonight and I wasn't thinking about potentially my situation. I was just thinking that it sounds very anti-family. Folks that wanna have a, a space where family can come and visit and stay, especially on a lake, that is very common. My father's lived on Orange Lake his entire life. I've always known the lakes. Baraj top apartments or small little guest houses with a kitchen and a bathroom and all that stuff are not uncommon at all. I guess I would just ask that, at least in, in your dealings, potentially think more about what you could do to be an ally to the residents of the township instead of putting up potential barriers that are coming from certain voices naysaying what the residents seem to want. Thank you.
Ask, not least.
Somebody else welcome to go after me. I promise to respect your time and not go more than three minutes. And thank you for your service. I just wanted to make one comment about your discussion when you're talking about air conditioner, condensers versus generators. You seem to focus entirely on sound. I can tell you there's a big difference in terms of emissions and smell. Thank you. Thank you. Do you know who that is? He didn't give us his name or address.
I'm John Sharp, five, three, two, seven, Webster Church Road.
Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing no other comments, uh, seeing no other comments.
Go to bed.
Seeing no additional comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some motions.
I did that, it's a great job. Oh, does anybody else have information? We covered it earlier in the comments. Anybody like to make any more comments? I have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you for everybody sticking around.